And they also couldn't get their insurance claims met. So that's why we see, of course, so many boarded up windows in our city. All reported increased costs and spending for security said 78% have been spending a lot more money on security, and this is dramatically decreasing their profit margins. Again, that's a big factor in why our storefronts aren't renewing their leases. I think this is just us being responsive to our local main streets across the city, and I hope my colleagues will agree. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Is that a motion? Or because this is a Prosper Portland, do we need to take this within the Prosper budget? Counselors, we're entering a messy period where we have some economic development things that are more appropriate in Prosper.
Yeah, you went out of that. Okay, great. You wanted me to do this when we started this session.
That's okay.
Just having a moment with you here.
We're figuring out the order of things here.
Donnie, do you have an opinion?
Counselor Kaya Malane has a point that she's nudging me on.
So, to add on, we have had conversations about Prosper, and there have been some -- I've had some conversations with leaders at Prosper. They appear ready to support an additional SIF draw of about $3 million for economic development within Prosper, not backing out of any general fund. And I propose that we consider these items in Prosper now.
So...
Thank you.
We do have Prosper open. We've recessed that to enter this meeting. We have a number of economic development items, but I'm hearing that there may be some that we want to take within Prosper, so...
And this is all been discussed with people at Prosper, and they approve this message.
It sounds -- I'm sorry, Counselor Canall, did you answer Counselor Smith's question? Okay. I'm looking at Chabri just to get a nod that there's some comfort here. Would you like to come up? Sure. Chabri's here. And Counselors, what I think I might do is, as long as Robert Taylor doesn't give me an "I say and I can't," I may move us into -- recess this meeting and move us into the Prosper budget meeting for a few minutes.
Let's do it.
I'm getting nods that that's okay. So I'm going to recess our budget meeting of the City Council and enter us back into the budget meeting as the Prosper Budget Committee. Fantastic. So Counselor Kaya Malane, do you want to speak more to what you were saying? And we have folks here from Prosper if we need nods or thumbs up or details.
Yeah, the only other piece is conversations included. That money funding the James Beard Market, the Broken Window Fund, increasing Summer Works Youth Employment. I won't be able to do that full amount, but about $500,000, and also about $500,000 for the Office of Film and Events.
Okay. So it sounds like we might have some agreement here, Counselors. Before, we were dealing with some Prosper things where we didn't have agreement. It sounds like we may have some agreement here on a package that would be specific things within Prosper's budget, not backing out general fund that folks have put on the table. We've had one of those moved from Counselor Ryan. So I believe if folks are interested in moving forward in this conversation, what we have is Ryan -- was that Ryan 1? Is that this one? We have Ryan 1, and now I'm going to need to look to our attorneys and Ruth, because Ryan 1, I don't know if we have to list it differently if it's an amendment to the Prosper budget. We can still call it. It's Ryan 1 on our sheets, but this would be an amendment to the Prosper budget now as opposed to the city budget.
I believe that's appropriate.
To increase -- we may have to do some additional wording here on this because it was written a little differently, but to increase or refund, I guess, because it was defunded, but to refund the Repair and Restore Grant Program within Prosper Portland at a level of $1 million funded by an additional draw on SIF funds. Is that accurate, Counselor?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second to Counselor Ryan's amendment?
Second.
Okay, I think Counselor Kaya Malane beat you to it, Counselor Canall. Is there any discussion?
Counselor President, just for clarification, the language we have is 1.5. Is it 1 or 1.5?
It's 1.
1.
I changed it to 1. Yeah.
Okay.
Point of information, so what just happened? So $1 million is coming out of the package that you're talking about? Or is that what you said?
We're still working on, I think...
I think Counselor Kaya Malane described a package that it sounds like she had some conversations with folks about, and Counselor Ryan's amendment is a part of that package. So we need to work through these amendments one at a time, unless we'd like to vote on it all as a package. But I think we have one before us that's been made.
Point of clarification, can we go over the total of the three? How does the three break down?
Absolutely. Counselor Kaya Malane, would you like to walk us through this?
Sure. $1 million to James Beard, $1 million to Broken Windows Fund, $1 million to Summer Works Youth Employment Initiative, and -- I'm sorry, $500,000 to the Summer Works Youth Employment Initiative, and $500,000 to the Office of Film and Events.
Some questions. Do you want to go through that one more time?
$1 million to the James Beard Market, $1 million to -- it might have a different name. I'm just calling it Broken Windows Fund.
Repair and Restore Grant.
Repair and Restore. $500,000 to the Office of Film and Events, $500,000 to the Summer Works Youth Employment
Counselors, we might speed this up. I don't know if it would help. Would folks' nods of heads, yes or no, be interested in voting on this in one fell swoop? I'm seeing more yeses, no no's, and some...
All right, then just...
Okay, we have a no from somebody who brought forward one of these proposals, so let's take them one at a time. So we have an amendment and a second on the table. Is there discussion on the amendment and second from Counselor Ryan? Ryan 1, which has now been slightly changed, so I -- we can reduce that to...
It went from 1.5 to 1 million.
Okay, 1.5 to 1 million.
So be a team member with everybody to get to the three.
Okay. Counselor Zimmerman, are you in the queue on this amendment? Go right ahead.
With this amendment and the others, I guess I'm just curious what changed.
I have some questions, Tess. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Chabri Vickers for the record, Director of Equity Policy and Communications at Prosper Portland. And again, your question was, with this particular amendment, what changed?
We heard a lot earlier in the evening about not touching the $3 million amendment that was made about Prosper General Fund. And now I see you sitting, and it looks very supportive of a $3 million general fund change to Prosper. So I'm really curious...
We understand the amendment, it wouldn't affect the general fund preparation.
Correct. It would be for SIF.
It would be for SIF.
Correct.
Which your executive director has said your board will need to approve in order for that to be the case.
Correct. So we've been working with our board, and our board is absolutely looking forward to being collaborative with all of you. We look forward to meetings. We could meet as often as you would like, and we're committed to that and have been doing that as we speak tonight. And so with conversations with our board, along with our executive director and team, yes, this SIF movement is something that we are...
And of the $3 million, Chabri, what are -- what will not be included in the SIF current plan?
So are you saying, like, how that -- when that draws down from SIF, what does that mean? So it is...
What are you giving up to be amenable to this? What are you giving up?
Totally. Counselor Tony Barnes for the record, Tony Barnes, CFO, Prosper Portland. So there will be an opportunity cost of ongoing interest earnings and interest from loans that could be made from that $3 million. We anticipate that would be in the time period -- well, it'll be ongoing next year throughout in perpetuity, since it's a one-time cost. It's not going to be replenished. And then the $3 million will not be available for small business loans or other loans, other investments that could be made.
I guess I'm looking for an idea of, I usually do 10 a year, now I'll only do 7. That's what I'm kind of looking to hear.
We have the capacity right now to do, I think, 19 to 21 loans in the next year and the year after that. It will start impacting year 3, 4, and thereafter. So it just is a drawdown of available financing, and we won't be able to do any acceleration of financing if needed, if the band is there.
And with the average loans at about $600,000, I mean, that's -- you match that up with how many businesses would be coming to us for that. So that's the loss. However, what we've heard from the counselors is about reinvesting in economic development through Repair and Restore, through workforce, excuse me, and James Beard, and the Summer Works program, and the Film and Events. So that, to us, feels aligned with much of what Advance Portland calls out, and our board is supportive of.
Thanks for clarifying that. And I -- so I just want to make sure I understand. Counselor Ryan, your amendment is not only changed at 1 million, but it's now changed in the SIF language, because you had general fund identified in there, but it's actually SIF, it sounds like. Okay. Thanks for the clarification.
Counselor, Counselor Ryan, this is your piece. Counselor Smith, are you in the queue to speak to Counselor Ryan's amendment?
Yes, thank you. I heard about Summer Works. I didn't -- that wasn't what I was interested in, because I'm more interested in making sure that the COAB program that took the money from Next Generation for $600,000, that that money be put back to help those organizations that help with apprenticeships and do the wraparound support. So we had $600,000 taken out, and I would much rather have that $600,000 put towards Next Generation. That was cut out of the Prosper budget.
Counselor, I believe as part of the 12% reduction that Prosper -- that was included in the mayor's proposed budget, there was, I think, a $200,000 reduction to...
It was 600. Next Generation was 600. It was 112...
112 participants, that's right.
Yep.
I think that was...
It was 600,000.
That's correct. Wait.
Yes, sir.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Let me double check. It's been a long day, but we'll check the numbers right now.
Counselor, did you have comments to the...
I wanted to tell them that I didn't want the Summer Works. I wanted the COAB, because that is the workforce development. Those 112 are more important at this time.
Counselor, I think the conversation was around workforce development, and if the wrong thing got labeled...
Workforce, COAB, Next Generation is workforce development.
I think that the conversation was around workforce development, and if the wrong thing got labeled...
Yep. So let's change it.
We're still on the...
And I'd like to have it at 600,000, because that's what was taken from the budget.
Counselor, so as part of the 12% reductions, there was a $200,000 reduction in workforce as part of the initial...
Are you sure? What was the 600,000?
We also had reductions in...
Counselor, this seems like an important conversation to have, but right now we're debating Counselor Ryan's amendment, so I'm wondering if this is something that we can have a couple of folks figure out while we continue the debate on the amendment around...
So does that include everything that they talked about? Summer Works or just his James Beard?
This is just -- no, this is just on Repair and Restore Grants, which is an amended...
Oh, I'm sorry.
You would ask to break this apart into pieces, rather than to do it as one package.
I am supportive.
That's okay. Counselor Murillo, did you have a comment on Ryan that what was Ryan 1, it is now a different version of Restore and Repair Grants?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I think this is a good idea, and it makes sense while our small businesses are struggling in Portland. And I hope that as other things come up in the budget, that we also consider that there are amendments that will help our constituents who are struggling with things like rental assistance. So when we do socialism for businesses, we should do it for our constituents, too. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Dunphy, did you have -- were you in the queue for Counselor Ryan's amendment? Counselor Green, were you in the queue for Counselor Ryan's amendment?
Yes, I just -- I think this is really important. This is one of the key hurdles for business activation, which, again, as we've talked about, is the ingredient for our general fund revenues, so I support it.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Canall?
No.
Counselor Clark, are you in the queue for Counselor Ryan's amendment? Seeing no other discussion on Counselor Ryan's amendment, Kealan, could you please call the roll?
Canall?
Thank you to Counselor Ryan for putting this forward. I was hoping we could get a half a million, and getting a million's great. I support it. Thank you so much. I vote aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Malane?
Aye.
Murillo?
I'm really supportive of our city using our dollars to help people out when they're having hard times. Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Clark?
All business is critical, so thank you, Counselor Ryan. Aye.
Green?
Thanks for having those conversations with your board and supporting us. Aye.
Zimmerman?
Aye.
Avalos?
Aye.
Dunphy?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Pirtle Guinea?
Aye.
The amendment is approved with 12 aye votes.
Thank you, Counselors. Look at us getting things done. Counselor Kaya Malane, what was the second piece of what you put forward?
$1,000 to the James Beard Market.
$1,000.
$1,000. $1,000. It's getting late.
The decimals are moving, folks. The decimals are moving. Counselors, do we have Counselor Dunphy? I know you had -- no, Counselor Green, I'm sorry, had brought that forward. Did you want to make the formal motion here?
Thank you, yes. I move the motion, $1 million to James Beard. Original green 2 is 1.5, but this is better than 0.
Second. Ooh, Counselor Canall, I'm going to give that to Counselor Clark since it's her district. Okay. And Counselor Green, what was your original amendment number? Just so I can track for us. I know this is a bit changed at this point.
The original amendment number was green 2.
Thank you. I'm going to find that while we're talking. Looking for anybody in the queue for discussion on this amendment, Counselor -- there are folks whose hands are not coming down. Counselor Clark? Counselor Dunphy? Oh, your hand is down, Counselor Canall? No. Counselor Smith, is your hand in the queue on this amendment?
Yes, I have a question. And so that was in a -- another amendment for 1.25 million? Counselor Green?
Previously, I had an independent amendment for 1.5 that I was going to try to fund if we were successful in the earlier Prosper amendment. So this is now a sort of different offer here, and so my amendment is actually now reduced down by 500,000.
Right. And where did I see this before? I think that was Madam President's. It was in her package for 500,000, right?
Correct. I tried to put in something there because I thought there was broad support.
Yes. So how did they determine which ones got the $1 million and which one got the 500?
Counselor, I...
Sorry, is that a question for Prosper?
We can certainly offer. So Repair and Restore, we know with those numbers in the past, and I'd love you to talk about your -- the programmatic team, having at least that amount to what folks have talked about truly helps us support those businesses, whether if it's just, excuse me, window breaks, or as we're really looking at the expanded Restore program. Do you want to share a little bit more about Restore and why that $1 million helps?
That's fine. So what I want to do is, I did check it out. It was 200,000 for Next Gen. I got the confirmation on that. And so -- and then the other 300,000 can go to Summer Works.
Okay.
Okay. So Counselor, it sounds like we're good on this amendment? Okay. Counselors, I'm not seeing anybody else in the queue. Counselor Green?
I just -- I do want to clarify something, because the city attorney came up and said you should probably clarify this, which means I'd probably clarify it. My original amendment had the 1.5 coming from the City of Portland's general fund. This would now come directly from SIF. So that's the change.
Thank you so much for saving me from clarifying that. So Counselors, that is the amendment before us, that change that Counselor Green just referred to, to this being SIF-funded and $1 million, and seeing no one else in the queue. Kealan, could you call the roll?
Canall?
Aye.
Ryan?
I just have to say, I'm very excited about this. Thank you, Counselor Green, for your collaboration. And what I hear from good sources is this will leverage, hopefully, 10 million from the state. Aye.
Kaya Malane?
Aye.
Murillo?
Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Zimmerman?
Aye.
Avalos?
Aye.
Dunphy?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Pirtle Guinea?
Aye.
Amendment is approved with 12 aye votes.
Okay. Counselor Kaya Malane, I think you have our running list, but I've seen you running around a little bit. Where are we at here?
I propose an amendment for 500,000 to go to workforce -- a workforce development project, 450,000 to film and events, and 500,000 to the large events stability grant program.
I believe that last one was 50 to add up. You said 500, but if it's adding up, it's...
Yeah. 500 workforce, 450 film and events, 50 large events stability grant program.
Okay. So Counselors, there is...
Second.
Okay. And do we need some color around the workforce piece, Counselor Smith, and how that's broken down? Or are those just dollars for workforce programs at Prosper Portland?
I thought it was on the second one. So are we on this one for the 500, the 200 for...
200 Next Gen and 300 Summer Works.
Perfect.
I believe I'm going to try to capture this. An amendment for $300,000 to Summer Works, $200,000 to Next Gen, $450,000 to Film and Events, and $50,000 to...
Large events.
Large events. Stability grant coming out of SIF, all within Prosper. Kealan and Haley, do you need that in writing, or do you have it?
What was the Next Gen amount?
200,000.
I believe we have a motion and a second on the table. Counselors, is there any discussion? Kealan, can you please call the roll?
Canall?
Aye.
Aye.
Kaya Malane?
Aye.
Murillo?
Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Zimmerman?
Aye.
Avalos?
Aye.
Dunphy?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Pirtle Guinea?
Aye.
Amendment is approved with 12 aye votes.
Counselors, I think we just gave Counselor Clark a run for her money for efficiency. Nice job, Counselor Kaya Malane.
Happy to help.
I am going to back us out of the Prosper hearing, back into the council hearing. So Counselors, I am going to recess the Budget Committee on Prosper Portland's budget and reopen the Budget Committee of the Portland City Council. We have taken a number of these economic development amendments off the table. If there are economic development amendments that relate not to the Prosper budget but to the city budget that we should consider, I would entertain folks entering the queue to propose amendments, again, for the city budget related to economic development. Counselor Zimmerman, is that why you are in the queue?
Next topic.
Counselor Clark, is that why you are in the queue? Counselor Dunphy, is that why you are in the queue?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Dunphy, what say you?
What say me? I would like to consider Dunphy Amendment 7. This is an amendment to restore a 1 FTE, a Coordinator 1 position at the city's noise office, and it's $146,000, and it is drawing from the PP&amp;D contingency.
Skipping Counselor Zimmerman and Clark. Counselor Smith, are you in the queue on this amendment?
Could you repeat the amendment again?
So this is Dunphy Number 7. I'm going to read off of my remarks that I was supposed to read. I apologize. It's a motion to restore a Coordinator 1 position in the city's noise office within permitting and development. It's a core element of our regulatory capacity in the city's nighttime and music economy. This increases the Bureau program expenses within Portland permitting and development, the Development Services Fund, by $146,000 to restore this Coordinator 1 position. It decreases contingency within the Development Services Fund of Portland permitting and development by $146,000 to balance. Update attachments A through H as needed.
Question, where is the money coming from to restore it?
This is coming from the PP&amp;D contingency fund.
Okay. How much is in that fund?
I don't know.
DCA Olivera, could you please come forward and help us with that question, which I think may be relevant for further amendments as well?
Thank you, Counselors. Donnie Olivera for the record. Counselor, your question is regarding the Development Services Contingency Fund. We're projected to have an ending balance at the end of the fiscal year, so this is when that would be contemplated at approximately 13 million. But of course, that depends on our revenues for the coming months, but I think 13 million is a reasonable forecast.
Counselor Smith, do you have any further questions?
No, no, thank you.
Counselor Novick, are you in the queue on this amendment?
Yes.
Go right ahead.
DCA Olivera, I mean, what does this mean? What would this mean we will have less money for?
Donnie Olivera for the record. Counselor, the reserve is established to backfill when we have a shortfall in our forecast of revenues. So in this case, it's a contingency fund, a reserve. So in theory, we would just have less to draw down, you know, if the need came up.
Question for the council president. How do you see this interacting with your proposal in PP&amp;D?
I'm so glad you asked, Counselor. This -- my understanding is, and I would look to our deputy city administrator to confirm this, but my understanding is that this is one of the positions that would be restored at least temporarily, and then potentially in an ongoing fashion under my two budget amendments, Pirtle Guinea 1 and 2. That asterisk there, of course, is because I restore funds for the first three months of the fiscal year, and then we ask the Bureau to come back to us with a report on economic conditions and whether they think they will need continued funding after that in the Second Amendment. But it is one of the positions that is covered in those amendments.
And are you okay with this?
I would hope that if we pass this and then pass mine, we would back some amount of money out of mine in order to account for that. Counselor Clark?
I'd just like to ask Counselor Dunphy, can you tell us a little bit about what does a noise office coordinator do? And why is it important?
Absolutely. So under state law, we're required to regulate noise as part of our duties for health. And historically, the office has had a pretty robust team of folks to be able to issue permits if you're going to get a barbecue and have a loudspeaker system or something like that, in addition to responding to noise complaints. For the last decade or so, it has historically been a one-person office. We have a noise officer who's been with the city for 20 years, but he does a great job. A couple of years ago, this office was expanded into two positions, plus a director, plus an admin. And this Coordinator 1 is primarily, as I understand it, she's primarily in charge of the permit issuance to be able to get, if you're going to have an event, to be able[1784.91] to have an event, to be able to have a noise variance, to be able to do a public event, while the noise officer goes and responds to built environment complaints.
And we have that many applications?
Hundreds, thousands of individual, not thousands, but hundreds, certainly.
So there's a range of events. I mean, everything from schools that throw, you know, need amplification, and there's plan reviews, there's inspections, to the council's point, but it is a robust city need.
Counselors, is there any other discussion or debate on Dunphy 7? Seeing none, Kealan, could you please call the roll?
Canal.
Aye.
Ryan.
No.
Koi Amalane.
Aye.
Mario.
It's really important that we move away from having police respond to these type of calls, so aye.
Novick.
Come feel the noise, girls rock your boys. Aye.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Zimmerman.
I hope this stays in there, but we're tackling some pretty small stuff before some very big things, and I imagine that this is one of those that I don't know if it makes it through the end of the night. Although, aye, we've run this credit card, let's keep doing it.
Avalos.
Swipe. Aye.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Pertle Guinea.
Aye.
Amendment is approved with 11 yes votes and 1 no vote.
Ironically, I think I'm next in the queue on this. Counselors, I would like to turn your attention to Pertle Guinea 1 and Pertle Guinea 2 in the economic development area. I'm pulling up my notes so that I know which is which. Bear with me for a moment here. Pertle Guinea 1 would allow Portland permitting and development to draw $450,000 each month from their Bureau to retain 31 of the FTE which were previously cut for a three-month period, for the months of July, August, and September, in order to retain staff as we move through things like the conversation the mayor would like us to have around SDC waivers, which might lead to more applications for permits. This is a package. Pertle Guinea 2 would ask us to find $4 million in our reserves, which we could draw on if economic conditions warrant us continuing those positions through the rest of the fiscal year. I do not have a funding source for Pertle Guinea 2. I had proposed some other amendments that did leave us with surpluses. One of those was cut down significantly today, but I didn't have a funding source tied specifically to this. I acknowledge that this is a large amount of money, do not have a funding source tied specifically to it. It is funding in contingency. I get nervous about tying up too much contingency to specific projects, but that is, of course, an option here. I would entertain a second on Pertle Guinea 1 and 2.
Second.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Zimmerman, are you in the queue, you're in the queue for discussion? Go right ahead.
All right. So, I think this is the, what I like about packages is that sometimes you vote for things maybe that you're not totally in love with in order to move an entire thing through. And that's where I was supportive of Pertle Guinea 1 in the package. As it stands, not being part of a package, not really getting us anything, I think this is a bad amendment. I think it strings out the transition and the rightsizing and all of the things that I've spoken about before. And so without that, I won't be supportive of number one. On position number two, on Pertle Guinea 2, $4 million, and you used two different words, and I really think you need to clarify. You first called it a reserve, which is different than a contingency, because at the end you called it contingency. And if it's a contingency, then we need to find a place to put this money, or get it from, excuse me. If it's a reserve, that is saying it's a draw from a reserve, and I don't think you'd have to identify it. So I think that's important to identify in what you mean there. But I would again say that I don't understand this. I've also never seen any government organization, all of a sudden, hit a metric that then they have to go and exceed and drive $4 million worth of hiring. So this, to me, seems like it's sending a signal, but will be, it will cause us to find $4 million in the general fund, to put into contingency, to then never be executed. And I worry about four more million dollars of cuts to programs to fill a contingency just to sit there, because this is never going to get executed. So I don't think either one of these should pass.
Counselor Zimmerman, my understanding from our budget office is that at the City of Portland, contingency, which is set aside for a specific purpose, is called a policy reserve. I find it confusing that we use those two words interchangeably as well, but that is why I use them interchangeably.
Okay. But it still means four more million dollars of general fund would have to be found if it's that.
I appreciate that DCA Olivera has come back up to the front. Very frankly, I reached out to our Deputy City Administrator who oversees PP&amp;D and said, "We have a big cut in PP&amp;D, and we know that there is sometimes a lag, where because these positions are funded by fees, we, when permit applications start going up, we don't yet have the fees collected to hire up." So there's a lag there. And I said, "What would we need to do to, with as few resources as possible, knowing that resources are tight, help to address that lag, so that the things that we are doing to try to spur development, aren't met with the brick wall of us being the slowdown in permitting, given all of the layoffs?" And this was the solution that our Bureau brought forward.
I understand that, but that is what a contingency is.
I understand.
We can use it later in the year. We already have a $3 million contingency that's unrestricted. That's what it is.
I give that introduction because I would love to have DCA Olivera share any remarks that would be helpful at this time.
Thank you, Council President. So, Counselor Zimmerman, you're flagging the dilemma that we're experiencing here as we're introducing interventions and products that we're hoping to spur development, that lag in implementation and realities, that if we laid off, and I want to acknowledge this, talking about layoffs in a sort of like flippant way is not my preference, but I just, I gotta talk about it in this real way. If we laid off 53 people on July 1, and then come November, we see an uptick in development and permitting, now we're at this, this point that Council President just flagged, where we're trying to catch up with hiring. By using the reserve policy for the first quarter of the year, it extends those 31 staff, and the Bureau, and I think Director Kuhnhausen's in the room, described those positions that we're keeping, will allow us more time to see the forecasts. So we come back to you all in the fall, we'll have higher fidelity on what the future looks like. And it may be, and this is where I don't, I'm saying this uncomfortably, that we still have to look at laying off more staff. But at least it gives us a little bit more time, to get a little bit more information, to see if the SDC moratorium, some of the other interventions around self-certification or third-party certification, if those start to generate more interest in development in Portland. And that's what we're solving for. Yeah. And the second one would be, once we get to that point, we have that information, then you all can contemplate what makes sense to introduce that contingency, that general fund contingency, into the Bureau to keep those staff onboard.
Counselor, you made the point that this is what we have contingency for. And while I would prefer to pass Pertle Guinea 2, so that we have that money specifically earmarked for this purpose, and also we have some metrics for when that would happen, we could rely on our contingency, knowing that folks may be coming forward with an ask.
I don't want to embarrass folks here, but there's a lot more at play here, and I think we are whiting into something. And I think that you've got to seriously consider pulling back number four, or the 4 million, excuse me.
I appreciate your input, counselor. Counselor Novick, are you in the queue on these amendments?
Yes, I was. I'm still, I just want to be sure. I think that the Budget Director said earlier that we can't just create 4 million out of thin air, and so if we voted for number two, we'd actually have to find 4 million.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Counselor Mario.
No, I was in the queue for something else.
Counselor Smith.
Yes. Thank you for your amendment. I just don't think it goes far enough. I think we need to give people an opportunity, because 63 people are losing their jobs, not 31. And I was, instead of spending 1.35 million, which is 450 times 3, we need to be restoring the entire 9.5 million until we can identify if there's going to be an uptick, if we're going to have folks, it's, we're not going to have time enough to hire back all those folks if we get rid of them when, if, when the budget suggests, the mayor's budget suggests. So I like what you're doing. I like, we're going, we're going along the right track, but I don't, I don't think that it goes far enough. And I have an amendment in that would address this. And so I am going to see what everybody else thinks about this, but I just think it just, it just does not go far enough.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Green?
Thank you, Madam President. I support, I support Pertle Guinea 1 for all the reasons that we've discussed. I think we need to keep the capacity in our permitting Bureau to be able to execute when we've changed the conditions. I think the SDC thing is a big opportunity to change those conditions. I think, I don't know if I'm there on number two, just because I, we have a pretty scarce pool of money, and I know my colleagues have other things that would like to fund, so you have my support on number one.
Thank you, counselor. I keep hoping we can alternate between pro and con, but I can't get to that point, because there's pro on one and con on the other. So I'm continuing down the list. Apologies for the inconsistency. Counselor Canal.
What Counselor Green said.
Counselor Clark?
Unfortunately, ditto to Counselor Green. I, and I hate to say this, but I feel like we're prolonging the inevitable. I sound like Debbie Downer, but it just feels like that to me. But I'm ditto to Counselor Green.
Avalos?
I am definitely supportive of your goals. And so I want to support, I'm definitely going to support one. I want to support two. I'm just worried. I don't know, like, what's going to happen as the night goes on. If I support that, then at the end, are we going to just have to come back and then do cuts? That, that's like, just a big one. We've already been swiping the card, as Counselor Zimmerman said, but some of those were a lot smaller. So I just want to understand better. Like, what do you think would happen then? Like, would we have to, yeah?
Counselor Avalos, I do strongly believe that we need both of these amendments. I also would very much understand if we chose to pass Pertle Guinea 1 tonight and wait on Pertle Guinea 2 until the 11th. I do think we need to pass it. I think that might make some folks nervous if we do that, but I understand that that could be the more fiscally responsible path to take tonight.
Yeah. And then on that note, if, let's say, we put up two for a vote and it fails, would you not be able to bring it back next time?
If I put up two for a vote and it fails, somebody who voted no would be able to bring it back for reconsideration. And I could also change my vote to a no to do that. I also vote last, so I could just vote no against it. Counselors, Counselor, Counselor Novick, are you back in the...
My question is sort of generic, but how far out of balance are we right now?
Director Levine, could we get an update? I believe we're actually in the positives still.
That's correct. On the general fund side, you're to the good by about $300,000.
And how much of that is the council office budgets, though?
Well, that amendment passed, so the, if you took that away, you would be to the bad.
Actually, what I meant, though, is I know the council office budget money can't be used one for one for anything except another overhead Bureau?
The discretionary portion can be used. So I'm, that, that number I quoted you, sorry, I should have been more clear, is just general fund discretionary.
Okay.
There's more in overhead. So I'm, assuming that you were putting it towards something that is not overhead, you're to the good by $300,000.
Thank you.
Okay. Counselors, I believe that is everybody who's in the queue for debate. Counselor Zimmerman, would you like, I can't tell when you're back in, because you're not lowering your hand ever, counselor.
Of course not, because I got a bunch of amendments in this section that was supposed to be called three hours ago. So I still want to be first in that one. All right. So I appreciate, and I've said over and over that I think that we've got to get serious about these, the inevitable happening at a better time, but I've been open until the October 1st timeline. I hear that. Budget number one that the President's proposed isn't going to cost any more money. And I think we can get there. But I appreciate what some counselors are recognizing. $4 million for number two is a ton of other general fund that we've got to go cut if that thing gets passed tonight. So I'll support one, but boy, number two, mm-mm.
Counselors, I believe I don't see anybody else in the queue for debate. Kealan, could you please call the roll on Pertle Guinea 1?
Aye.
Ryan.
No.
Koi Amalane.
Aye.
Mario.
Aye.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Zimmerman.
Avalos. Aye.
Dunphy.
Aye.
Smith.
No.
Pertle Guinea.
Aye.
Amendment is approved with 10 yes votes and 2 no votes.
Thank you, counselors. I hear the hesitation on Pertle Guinea 2. In the name of time, I am happy to pull it back. I will be bringing it back forward on the 11th. I believe, I'm losing our place in the queue here. Counselor Mario, were you next in the queue for an economic development proposal?
How many people have, are left with economic, with this portion's proposals?
I believe I see you and Canal and Smith in the queue. And then we will close this out and move on to transportation, so that we can get back to that fee bill.
Okay. So I have a motion to move the amendment topic area, the next one, to parks, because it's a high priority area, and it's something that the community has been asking for this entire time, as a top priority. So I don't know why we're pushing it off to the 11th.
Counselor, we need to get back to the fee bill, which is why I have asked us to do transportation after economic development. Are you suggesting that we do parks after transportation if there's still time tonight, or that we do it before transportation?
I'm suggesting we do it before transportation, so that you guys can have a little hustle in your step.
Because that's... Get back to this after we finish economic development, and I will call on you first when we are done with the economic development proposals.
Yeah, but if you guys start slow-rolling stuff, I'm going to be annoying about it.
I'm not sure who you're referring to when you say "you guys."
My fellow counselors.
But let's try to refrain from impugning each other. Counselor Canal, do you have a proposal on economic development? Okay. Counselor Smith, do you have a proposal on economic development?
Yes, I did a pre-amendment for 1.6 million. And I want to take, I had 600,000 for Next Gen, and so we kind of...
Can you tell us which amendment number this is, please?
It is Smith 1.
Okay.
Works and youth employment. And so I want to scratch the 600,000 for the next generation, and I want to take the 1 million for summer works out of the contingency for the opioid dollars. There's $2 million in contingency. Increased funding for Summer Works Youth Employment Initiative by reallocating or allocating $1 million from the contingency fund for the opioid litigation. And take away the 600,000. The second one, I want to scratch, Smith 2, for increasing funding for Prosper Portland Office of Small Business. I guess we kind of handled that as well. And then 10, which is very similar to what Council President just did, but I go a little bit further.
Counselor, we're, we're looking for either a package that's related or one top priority, so that we can get to everybody and get through as much as possible.
Right.
I apologize if that wasn't clear.
So I just eliminated two.
Oh, so you're eliminating Smith 1?
I eliminated part of Smith 1, and I eliminated Smith 2. And so the third one, and the last one, that is very similar to yours, I don't think that we're going, it's called Smith 10, to increase the fund and resources for the Portland permitting and development, to preserve the 63 folks who are in the staffing and permitting operations. I want to restore 9.5 million to Portland permitting and development. I want the general fund to come from 4.5 million to come from the joint office account, and the 5 million... and the 5 million to come from PP&amp;D reserves.
So, it sounds like Counselor Smith has moved two amendments, the modified version of Smith 1, which lowers that amount to $1 million, and Smith 10. Is there a second on either of those?
And scratch Smith 2. That's done.
Got it.
Counselor Smith? Counselor Smith, do you have language that you could share with me for Smith 10?
Yes.
Smith 1 is-
Smith 10 is to increase, well, actually, it's to restore 9.5 million to Portland Permitting and Development. They were cut out of the mayor's budget. And the 4.5 coming from the joint office, and the 5 million coming from the PP&amp;D reserve.
Is there a second for Smith 1?
Yeah, I'll second.
Is there a second for Smith 10? Counselor Smith, I'm not seeing a second for Smith 10. Why don't we take up Smith 1?
Okay.
Counselor Canal?
I'm in the queue for that.
Not in the queue for that. Counselor Avalos, are you in the queue for Smith 1?
Yeah. I guess I'm trying to understand what we just did not too long ago with 500,000 for something that I forgot, and how that relates to Smith 1.
The 500,000, Counselor Avalos, was 200 for Next Gen. That's for workforce development, and 300,000 for summer works.
So, that's why you amended this down to 1?
Yeah, that's why I amended it to 1.
1 million?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. I'm next in the queue. I have a question for Director Levine. Smith 1 pulls money from the opioid settlement dollars, and I know-
Contingency.
From the contingency for the opioid settlement dollars. Can you help me understand how much is in that contingency? What are the limitations on it? Because I know there are limitations on other dollars. What is that contingency set aside for? I need to understand the implication of this amendment.
Yeah. And I'm not sure, I'd have to check on if it's budgeted in contingency or where it's budgeted. But my understanding is that there is about a million dollars that's expected. Sorry, I'm just pulling up the information. That's expected between what has been unspent so far and what we expect to receive next year. The, thanks. Yeah. Just over a million dollars. The restrictions are set by the, I think it's Schedule E of the opioid settlement. And I don't know, Robert, if you have it in front of you and can speak to this, the eligibility of this use.
And I'm sorry, you said there was how much in the contingency right now?
I don't know that it's actually in contingency, but it's the amount that we expect, plus the amount we have left from this current fiscal year, is 1.02 million.
So, we are expecting, we don't know if we'll get it yet, but we are expecting to have just over a million dollars?
Correct.
That has not yet been allocated to other uses?
Correct.
Okay. Robert, do you have information on the limitation in uses?
Yes, I do. And Ruth has correctly identified the limitations in the settlement agreements. You know, in general, the use of those funds needs to have some nexus to the prevention or treatment of opioid use disorder. So, if it's just general workforce development, that appears that the funds would not qualify for that. If it's workforce development for additional professionals who work with people with opioid use disorder, or co-occurring substance abuse, or mental health conditions, that would qualify. Training and scholarships for behavioral health practitioners or workers would qualify. Programs aimed at preventing opioid use, including youth-focused programs designed to prevent drug misuse, could be funded. Also, an allowed use is providing education to youth-focused programs to discourage or prevent opioid misuse.
Thank you, Robert. Counselor, I don't think I have ever turned down an opportunity to support workforce development in my entire career.
Before you say that, let me tell you something. Before you say that. So, here's the deal.
Yes, Counselor?
So, summer works is a very comprehensive program. We have a readiness training that we train kids on how to be ready in the workforce. We also have a component about drug and alcohol prevention. We huddle up every day and talk to the students. And just from a standpoint of BIPOC communities, fentanyl and substance abuse in BIPOC communities is very high. And so, knowing that, this will be a way to have some sort of opioid justice in making sure that those kids understand the dangers of opioids, understand the dangers of fentanyl, prevention strategies, and how educational initiatives can change their day. I have never seen a kid doing a drive-by or smoking drugs on their way to work. I just haven't. This has been a huge deterrent using this program. And this will be an excellent opportunity for us to expand it with these opioid dollars because it has impacted particularly the Black community really, really heavily. And so, this will be an opportunity to have some sort of social justice while we're educating the kids when they come in the summer. They're with us for a couple of months, and we're training them. We're with them every day. So-
Thank you, Counselor. And I am a huge supporter of the Summer Works program and look forward to finding other opportunities to support its expansion with you. I just don't think that I am comfortable using these dollars for that and then potentially not having the funds available when we've made promises to kids.
And I believe there's $2 million available.
Counselor Avalos, you're next in the queue.
Yeah. I guess I have a question because I have an amendment that was for the opioid settlement dollars. It was for 1.5 million for Fora Health, but then I was informed that there was only 200,000 left in it because 990 whatever was for Bybee Lakes. But I'm hearing that there was a new calculation and that there is a million in there. I'm looking to you, Ruth. Are you confirming what I'm saying?
Yes.
So, that's news that I just got and puts me in a, you know?
I understand.
So, I can't support this because I want to, I have an amendment to move, to put those dollars towards Fora Health. You know, it's for our district, right? Opening up 62 recovery beds. So, yeah. That's it.
Counselors, I don't see anyone else in the queue to speak to this amendment. Kealan, could you please call the roll on the modified version of Smith 1?
Canal?
No.
Ryan?
No.
Oyamalane? No. Mario?
No.
Novick?
No.
Green?
No.
Zimmerman?
No.
Avalos?
No.
Dunphy?
No.
Smith?
Yes.
Pirtle Guinea?
No.
The amendment fails with 1 yes vote and 10 no votes.
Thank you, Counselor. I believe that that is the end of folks in the queue with economic development budget amendments. I would like us to move now to the transportation section, but I have promised Counselor Mario that I would come back to her first.
Okay. So, I would like to motion to move the amendment topic area to parks next. Can I get a second?
Okay.
Counselors, we are in discussion on the motion on the table. Counselor Canal, are you in the queue for this purpose? Yep.
Yeah. I support this. I think we're, we've been hearing a lot, there were, I don't know how many people up there waiting on us to vote on the amendment on the MAC. And there's a lot of things in the broader parks conversation that we need to talk about. So, I support this. Thanks.
Counselor Smith, are you in the queue for this purpose? Counselor Mario? We should do it. I'm next in the queue. Counselors, it is 10:15. I was informed during our break, and I believe all of your offices were informed also, that we have a hard stop at midnight because of some staff timing. I know there are some looks about that. I'm frustrated by it as well. That is the reality we are living in right now. We do need to pass the fee bill with the TNC fee. I know some of you would like to talk about raising that. I would like you to have that opportunity. Most things we are talking about tonight can move to the 11th. But if we want to pass a change to this fee bill, I'd like us to do that while we have a fee bill in front of us that we can amend, which is why I'm asking for us to move to transportation next. It is 10:15. And I'm concerned that if we go to parks next, we won't have time to come back and do transportation and close out the things we need to do before the end of our night. Counselor Novick, are you in the queue to speak to this motion?
Yes, Madam President. I share your concern. I think we need to get through what we legally need to get through first. However, if we have any time afterwards, I do think that we should get to the amendments to take money from police and give it to parks because that's the main event. That's what the fans paid to see.
Zimmerman?
I'm not even going to try and predict what each next section is anymore. But I do agree with you that, first off, we emphasize this approved budget far more than most governments, and it's inappropriate. And the big thing to get through is the 11th. And so, I agree, we've got to get through the things that require us tonight, the TSEC, setting the size of the funds, because the fee structure is part of that. I think it's important. All of the amendments and all the points that Counselor Mario and others have brought up are important and can be argued and debated on the 11th just as much. But if we don't get, if we change the fee structure, I think we would be in violation then because we're not setting our revenues. That is very concerning to me, and that is the only reason I would like to stay here.
Thank you. Seeing no one else in the queue for debate, Kealan, could you call the roll on the motion before us, which is to?
I mean, I have a response. I was back in the queue.
Okay. Counselor Mario, you're back in the queue.
It will take me one minute to get the votes I need to move 2 million from police into parks. So, I think we can get that done. And you know what? It's not taking, it's not a cut. It's actually an increase, as Counselor Samir Canal has so-called it.
The parks debate is much broader than that.
I understand. But the parks is what people came here to discuss and to talk about, and it's a resource the community needs. And we have been going in circles for a lot of these things.
Counselors, I'd like to bring us back into order. Counselor Clark is in the queue.
I'm just asking, what are we voting on? I'm sorry, I was out of the room.
Counselor Mario asked if we could, if she could make a motion to have us move in a different order than I had previously informed everybody we would move in. I said that I would entertain that motion. Kealan, we have a motion on the table to talk about parks next instead of transportation. Could you please, oh, Counselor Avalos, are you in the queue for discussion?
I just jumped in really quick just to ask, is it just, what is the thing that you're saying? It's just one thing on transportation that has to happen today so we could come into parks and then come right back and do that one thing, or?
The fee bill is open with the TNC fee, which I know is part of the proposals that are on the table on transportation. I would like us to take up any proposals folks would like to discuss tonight on transportation so that if any of them involve an increase in fees, we can do that while we have a fee bill before us. Kealan, could you please call the roll?
Canal?
On the motion to reorder, I'll point out that there's only three hours scheduled on June 11th right now.
Gladmore?
I vote aye.
No.
Oyamalane?
Yes.
Mario?
Aye.
Novick?
No.
Clark?
No.
Green?
Aye.
Zimmerman?
I'm not even sure that we can tell the presiding officer how to run this, so no.
Avalos?
Aye.
Dunphy?
Aye.
Smith?
No.
Pirtle Guinea?
No.
The motion fails with seven, no, no, wait, I'm sorry.
6/6.
6/6. Motion fails with split vote. Thanks.
Thanks, Kealan. Counselors, we are moving to the transportation section of our amendments. And I would entertain anybody who has transportation amendments that they would like to move forward. I see Counselor Canal in the queue. Is that for transportation? All right. Counselor Avalos, are you in the queue for transportation? Counselor Novick, are you in the queue for transportation?
I am, but a clarification. I'm in the queue for amending the TNC fees, but I don't know if we can do that under transportation budget, or do we have to go back to doing the fee resolutions?
Ruth, do we do, I think we do both.
You have to do it in both, yeah. So, you can start in budget.
So, I believe we will do it in budget. And if we do pass anything that amends it, as soon as we are done with the transportation section, we will move back into our council meeting to address the fee bill.
Just a point of order.
Point of order, Counselor Zimmerman.
I'd like to remind everybody that the mayor's budget was proposed with $1.30, which is a 65% increase to the Uber and Lyft fees. That is not the fee schedule that came to the Finance Committee and that we sent to you all that we heard earlier 12 and 1/2 hours ago. So, I just want to make that clear that we will have to, if we do nothing right now except approve it, we still have to go back and amend that fee schedule. I know some of you have some increases you'd like to, but we're already out of balance. And that was a Scrivener's error, nothing intentional.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor, we talked to Counselor Novick. Counselor Clark, are you in the queue to bring a transportation amendment forward?
Yes, but it's a budget note regarding future revenue.
Let's hold if it's a budget note. We will do those. It may be on the 11th. Counselor Smith, are you in the queue to bring forward a transportation budget amendment?
Yes. Thank you. So, I have Smith 3. It's funding for the sidewalk improvement and paving program. And this, we put a request in to go to the Finance Committee to issue a series of 2 $50 million limited revenue bonds each year for the next two years, but to authorize a $200 million budget authority. And the reason why I'm bringing this now is because I know that it took, it was 11 a one vote in support of the resolution. But if we don't set aside the money now in this budget to impact '25, '26, then we'll be, we'll be out of order. And that's why I'm bringing it early. We have to do an ordinance to change some things, but we also have to put some money into a contingency fund so that we can account for the amount of money that it's going to cost to put SIP forward. So, I'd like to put a, put up a, what do you call it? Do I have to put something forward if the amendment is there? But I want to do an authorization.
You're motioning the amendment.
Yeah. I want to put a motion forward to do a 200,000 authorization, but we only want to do $100 million, $50 million for this fiscal year, $50 million for the next fiscal year, and that's going to cost about $8 million. I don't know, is Jonas still here? still here? 200 million, exactly. This is Smith 3.
So, counselors, we have Smith 3 before us, which is a $200 million authorization to take out $100 million in bonding. Is that correct?
To take out 100 million in bonding but doing a 200 million authorization so that we can come back in a couple of years. The idea is that if we take out too much money and we're not finished, we have to do some wrangling.
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Zimmerman. Counselors, discussion to Smith 3. Counselor Canall, is that your purpose in the queue? Counselor Clark?
I'd like to ask Counselor Smith, why are we reducing the Housing Bureau General Fund by 8 million?
So that's where we were going to originally take the money from, and I had a conversation with the mayor, and we're not going to take it from there because we're going to have a bigger conversation about housing on Friday. And so I think that that is where the conversation needs to come from. But I also want to change where the money comes from. And just to give you a couple of figures, I want to take it from the Transportation Operation Fund. And... Hold on just a second. In our research, we saw that debt service dropped off by $7 million this year for '25, '26. Well, in '26, '27, there's going to be approximately about $35 million that drops off in debt service. And that being said, there will be enough general fund money to put in 20-year bonds for the '26, '27. But if we take the money out of the Transportation Operating Fund, we could get that funded and started July 1st.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Did you... Counselor Green, I believe you're next in the queue for discussion.
Thank you, Madam President. Counselor Smith, respectfully, I don't think this is the way to do this authorization. I've been working with Jonas to come up with a funding plan for the issuance of this debt. You need to do that because you have an external bond committee that rates the quality of the debt and the overall portfolio of assets. I think we have to do it right, and this doesn't feel right to me. I don't think the debt service is 8 million. I think it's closer to 5 million. I would urge you to pull this back, and...
We can pull this back, but understanding, we're still going to have to find -- we're still going to have to find the money out of this fiscal year, and if we don't set it aside or identify where it's going to come from, we're going to be in the same situation a month from now, two months from now.
I understand that, but then we -- if we pass an ordinance before this council to authorize that debt...
No, it's not an ordinance. This is just to put the money aside when we pass the ordinance.
Let me finish. Thank you. I don't want to put this money aside before we pass the ordinance. When we pass the ordinance, we will do a budget amendment to this -- to then -- to then next fiscal year to move money around if this council, this body thinks that's the right thing to do. But I think this is premature. We have to figure out what the cost of this debt is. I know that we passed a SIP resolution last month, but I don't feel comfortable setting aside $8 million from this fiscal year from any source.
Not this fiscal year for '25, '26.
For the budget we are considering. From any source, for any fund, before we have voted on an ordinance...
The ordinance will identify the money. You won't have to do anything after the ordinance.
Counselor? We have to vote on an ordinance to authorize the debt, and during that period, we will have two readings on it. We will have some analysis. I'll ask the chief financial officer to help us out with that. We will identify that. Will we make our budget trade-offs at that time? I'm not prepared to support this part of SIP at this moment. I don't think it works in the best interest of our program. That's all I'll say.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zimmerman?
Thanks. I appreciate that Counselor Smith's been willing to look for a way to leverage our debt payments to achieve what we passed. I think it was 12-0, the resolution for those two districts to get sidewalks. And while the ordinance, and I'm going to give it all the time that I can this summer at the Finance Committee to develop the proper ordinance, I don't think of this too dissimilar from the ADA debt that we just recently authorized. And so the way I read this and the way I understand Counselor Smith's adaptations in the last week or so is that this is a signal of money that is already sitting in the Transportation Contingency Fund, and if at a future time we were to create the ordinance to create the debt, that we could use that. So I look at this as the second signal of what the previous resolution was, was about SIP. This says if we can get it together and pass a funding mechanism, that we have a payment mechanism as well. I wanted to go even further. I think that, you know, PSEF does $20 million worth of sidewalks right now for Safe Routes to School. I think that is very connected. But she's identified transportation. I think there have been some other ideas out there. And that's why I'm going to support it, because I don't see it deferring anything currently in our plan. I don't see it creating a larger gap tonight because it's already a contingency ready to be paid if the ordinance mechanism is created this summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Smith, I'm in the queue for a point of clarification. You talked about authorizing 100 million. I'm looking at something...
200.
Authorizing 200 million to go out for a bond for 100 million. I'm looking at something that talks about a series of $50 million bonds each year for four years, which I think would be 50 million this year. I just want to make sure that we're capturing your amendment correctly for our staff who are making this all legal for us.
Oh, it would legally be 50 million. The 200 million would cover four years, but we're only asking for the 100 million so we can do for next fiscal year and the following. I didn't get a chance to talk to Counselor Green because he wasn't -- he didn't have the information that I had, and I'm sorry about that, Counselor. Ruth had given me the amount of money that had dropped off, so you didn't have that information, and I apologize for that. So I knew that there was money sitting there. I just want the conversation, and I want to be able to ride the wave. And I'll be honest with you. A couple of things happened that really made me jump the gun on this. We're going to be asked for a lot of different things. I saw the Keller go up. I saw the Portland Trail Bladers go up for sale. We're going to be asked for a lot of money in possible bond authority. I do not want SIP to get caught in the middle of all of that stuff. And then East Portland is stuck again without sidewalks. District 4 on the west side is stuck again without sidewalks. So that's why I'm bringing it forward, because I knew that there was an opportunity to have it paid for, and if we could do it now. And then we'd still have to go back and do the ordinance to make it legal, but this is just putting the money aside into a fund that we already have, so...
Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay. Counselor Smith, I'm confused. What I'm looking at has the three bullets on it, and the third bullet is the Portland Housing Bureau. Did you take that off?
I took that off and said we're going to do the Transportation Operations Fund. As I said before, I talked to the mayor, and he said a bigger conversation is going to be had about housing and homelessness on Friday, so I took that back.
So I don't know what the downside is of actually approving this. Can you help me out with that? I don't understand the downside.
There wouldn't be a downside, but it's just -- it's just style. It's not -- it's style. It's not substance. Substance is here. We have different styles on how we want to do things. I like to get things done early, quick, so that we can set it up.
Okay.
But it still does not prevent us from -- I mean, we actually still have to do an ordinance, but we're just setting the money aside so that we have it there and that we know that this money is going to be set aside for SIP.
Okay, and Counselor Green was saying he doesn't think it has to be 8 million.
Well, at 7.5%, and you do 100 million, that's darn near close to...
Okay. Can he speak to this?
Can we... If we're going to throw around numbers, if we're going to throw around numbers, I want us to defer to the numbers that our budget team puts forward. So do we have a clear answer on what the debt payment would be for issuing $50 million?
100 million.
I'm sorry, Counselor. I'm still not seeing the 100 million in here, but let's go with 100 million.
Go ahead, Jonas.
Okay, sorry. I didn't know if there was a question. So...
Sorry, I dropped the question mark.
Yeah, apologies. So my understanding, just to level set, the resolution authorized looking into issuing up to $200 million for the SIP program. We are working on doing the due diligence so we can come forward, as Counselor Green mentioned, with a legally viable ordinance to authorize that financing. Often, those financing ordinances also include -- well, they will include authorization of the payment source, which could be a budget amendment at that moment, or could be budget resources identified ahead of time. I will also flag that under the current projection, which I want to be clear, we're meeting with PBOT tomorrow to begin that due diligence and really nail down the drafting of the ordinance, but under the current expectation of issuing bonds during fiscal '25, '26, there would not be a first payment until fiscal '26, '27, at which point the projected payment would be just over $8 million.
Thank you. Counselor Klay Amalane, are you in the queue to speak to this amendment? You can stay in the queue if you're there for another purpose.
I think it's time to call the question. I call the question.
Counselors, is there a second? Second. Counselors, do we have unanimous consent to move to a vote on this issue? I'm not seeing anybody shaking their head no. Kealan, can you please read the roll? Canall?
I look forward to doing a supplemental budget ordinance alongside the future ordinance, but for now, no.
No.
Klay Amalane?
No.
Murio?
No.
Novick?
No.
Clark? Sorry, was that yes? Okay, thank you. Green?
I appreciate your fight, but I'm a no.
Zimmermann?
Yes.
Avalos?
No.
Dunphy?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Counselor, I look forward to working on this in the budget or in the bill that I know you'll bring forward to us, the ordinance that I know you'll bring forward to us later, but for today, I'm a no. I have too many questions about what's in here.
The amendment fails with four yes votes and eight no votes. Counselor Canall, I believe you said you were not in the queue for this, for transportation. Is that correct? Counselor Novick, are you in the queue for transportation?
I am in the queue for transportation, but I'm in the queue to move to raise the TNC fees, and I want to know if we can do that as a standalone thing outside the budget amendments discussion.
Well, if we're doing it as an amendment to the budget, then you would do it right here in this budget amendment discussion. I don't see a Novick transportation amendment, so are you making a new amendment from the floor?
Okay, I'm confused. I thought that we were -- so at some point, we'll go back to just do fees? Is that right?
If it is, if you're moving... There are a few people who have amendments that would affect the TNC, and if you are moving to raise the TNC to have more money in the transportation budget or to back general funds out of the transportation budget, then we would entertain that motion now. I'm just noting that we don't have an amendment from you, so it would be an amendment from the floor unless you are moving somebody else's amendment.
It would be an amendment from the floor.
Okay, go right ahead.
I would like to propose an amendment that I've been working on with Counselors Murio, Green, and Dunphy, to amend the TNC fee per ride in Exhibit F and increase the rate from the listed 65 cents to $2 per ride. The mayor's proposed budget includes an increase to $1.30 per ride. I believe -- we believe that an increase to $2 is fair. The total increase would raise the additional $10 million, 5 million of which is already included in the mayor's budget. The revenue is currently restricted to the TNC use for the TNC regulatory program, so we'll be bringing an additional ordinance next week to allow the funds to move more freely as GTR. We know that the Transportation Bureau is starved for money. Just to give a preview, I think some folks will be tempted to rely on this to reduce the amount of general fund going to transportation. I don't think that that's a good idea. I think we should use every dollar we can to address our failing streets. I think that it's... 10 years ago, I was one of the deciding votes to let the rideshare companies operate in the city. I actually now believe that that was a mistake. At the time, some environmentalists thought that that would reduce the use of cars because we encourage people to take transit and then use the rideshare companies for the last mile. Instead, it's just resulted in more cars in the streets and more carbon emissions. And I think as long as they're out there, which I regret doing, then we should use it to raise some money for transportation. One specific thing I have in mind is I'm worried that the proposed suspension of SDCs will cost $6 million that PBOT is counting for, counting on to -- for the federal match for the 82nd Avenue Bus Rapid Transit. I think that it's right, that we could probably rely on increased TNC fees to make up for the $6 billion that they would lose, which could destroy the project. And I think that'd be kind of fitting to have money from the rideshare companies help ensure a transit project. I'm also planning to continue examining the relationship between PBOT and the rideshare companies generally, but for now, my proposal is to raise the fees to $2. And I will note that the city attorney has told me that since the mayor's -- well, since -- normally, since this is a proposal on the second reading, it would require another meeting to pass it unless we add an emergency ordinance. So it asks for consent that regardless of people -- how people vote on the amendment, whatever amount we wind up with, that we -- they vote to be one of the nine people to have it be an emergency ordinance. I also just wanted to ask Counselor Zimmerman, based on what you just said about the Scrivener's error, is it true that we are going to need to make this an emergency ordinance no matter what, no matter what figure we wind up with?
Yes.
Okay, so one way or another, it's going to have to be an emergency ordinance. Thank you.
And for folks who didn't catch it, this is listed in your packets as Murio 2. For anybody who's watching, this is, I believe, in the revenue generating section, but is related to transportation as well, so we are taking it up here. Murio 2. Counselor Canall, are you in the queue to speak to this amendment? Counselor Murio?
Oh, no, I was just trying to say that it was Murio 2, and it's been brought... Yeah.
Counselor Zimmerman, are you in the queue to speak to this amendment? Go right ahead.
Thanks, Madam President. And I do think that the counselors who are proposing this have been thoughtful. I think that I have a firm disagreement on it. I looked at my Uber receipts. I know that the Uber receipt says City of Portland fee 65 cents, City of Portland accessibility fee 11 cents. I know that this sounds great that we're taxing some big company, but it goes directly to the users, to the riders. I am reminded when I worked in the mayor's office upstairs, and the vice president of Portland State University called me because we had started a new school year, and it was coming out of the pandemic, and he had students who had signed up for in-person class, and within the first 30 days had disenrolled from in-person to go back to virtual because of the situation on TRIMET, getting to class, because it was a little too expensive for them to live in the central city, so they were taking TRIMET. I also remember a later conversation with that same person, who then said a number of students were taking Uber and Lyft in, and they didn't prefer it, but because of the situation on TRIMET, which is, as some people on this dais have said, our largest homeless shelter, where dangerous behavior happens every single day, where TRIMET has had to hire over 200 safety specialists in order to make the trains and the buses barely palatable. palatable. I think it is rich that we are going to then tell those people, those kids are one example, but there's thousands, there were 8 million rides by Uber and Lyft last year in Portland. That's 8 million $2 charges that we're about to do, and I don't want to raise taxes on individual Portlanders, particularly when the other alternatives are pretty crappy right now. And I think we're also going to decrease the footprint that police and public safety have in the city in the same action tonight, and so to do that and take away the tools that people have, I hope we don't, I know it's going to pass, but I just don't think raising taxes on individuals right now in a time I don't think that we have to. I don't think we're in a budget crisis, I think we're in a priorities crisis. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselors, I was remiss in not actually confirming that that introduction was Counselor Novick's motion and then taking a second.
It was my motion.
Second. Okay. Counselor Murillo, are you back in the queue?
Yeah, as the only person here who's dependent on transit because I don't have a car, I don't have a license, and my mom only knew how to drive a motorcycle, so we never learned how to drive. I don't know why it's always the men that are like six feet tall that are terrified of being on the bus. It's really not a big deal. I ride the bus all the time and I'm 5'2" and 130 pounds soaking wet, so I think we will all survive it. People love the bus. I see people fall in love on the bus, and the reality is that we need this funding for our budget. We don't have any funding to play with right now, as we've all discussed, and we are running that credit card up, so I suggest we pass this quickly.
Counselor Dunphy?
I just wanted to express my support for this also. While this is a dramatic increase from where we are now, it is worth noting that comparable cities are far excessive of this. As I understand it, the city of Seattle is $4 a ride, and the city of New York, I believe, is seven. I even think that, I understand it, that the Port of Portland has their separate, if you get a pickup at the airport, if you get dropped off at the airport, it's the city of Portland. If you get picked up at the airport, they have their own, and I believe it's a $2 fee as it is right now. So, I think we have a lot of room to be able to make flexibility in this, and it is still worth noting that the, the overall cost for a entrance to being an Uber driver or a Lyft driver is less than that of being a taxi driver and the investment in there. We need to provide some level of market stability over there, because I was in City Hall when the, the vote to implement TNCs happened as well, and it's time to have a bigger look at that, that arrangement, and I think this is a really good first start.
Counselors, I'm in the queue, just to note that I did ask if it was possible to find out how many riders had accounts that were from Portland, meaning people who live here and take this as part of their regular transportation versus people who are visiting our city, and that's not data that the city has access to. I just wanted to share with folks that we don't have any way of knowing that. Counselor Canal, I'm sorry, I thought you were not in the queue for this, but it looked like you were raising your hand there. Counselor Dunphy is back in the queue.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I had one more thing to say, that we have also heard directly from the Uber Drivers Union and Radio Cab staff, and they are in support of this and also are interested in that, that broader conversation.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Canal, were you in the queue or not? In the queue? Okay, Counsel, Counselor Murillo, you've spoken to this twice.
I just had a quick question, so are we moving the Murillo amendment forward, my amendment, or the verbal one? They're the same, really, I don't.
I believe that Counselor Novick has moved Murillo 2 and you seconded it.
Okay, let's vote.
That's how I've tracked this.
Let's vote.
Okay. Kealan, could you please call the roll?
Canal.
Thank you. Aye.
Ryan.
I know this is going to pass. I really think it deserves more dialogue, and I would have liked to have had more time to look into that, so I'm usually a no on floor amendments. No.
Koyama Lane?
Yes.
Murillo?
Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Clark?
Wait, as much as I want more money for transportation, I'm very concerned about this, I'm going to vote no.
Green?
We got to get more people taking transit, and this is one step in the way. I vote aye.
Zimmerman?
No.
Pavlos?
Aye.
Dunphy?
Aye.
Smith?
No.
Portoguine?
Aye.
Amendment is approved with eight yes votes and four no votes.
Counselors, are there any other transportation amendments that folks would like to move this evening? Counselor Dunphy?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. I would like to move, for the purposes of discussion at the very least, Dunphy 8, but I would like to amend the text of Dunphy 8 as prefiled. Dunphy 8 is a motion to decrease the Portland Bureau Transportation General Fund dollars following a TNC fee, after the TNC fee passes. I move to dedicate, to fully, to use these new revenues to fully fund the Vision Zero based off of the reflect, reflecting this off of the Koyama Lane amendment regarding fully funding Vision Zero. They are receiving a $677,664 reduction. I would like to earmark $677,664,000 to the Vision Zero programming and a $2 million decrease of inter-fund cash transfers within Bureau Transportation to reduce general fund support by 2 million.
So, Counselor, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding this. You are taking general fund that is within, within PBOT, you are redirecting $677,664 of general fund within PBOT to the Vision Zero program, which had been previously reduced, buying that back up, and then backing up, backing out the balance of 2.5 million minus $677,000, so just under 2 million.
That's right.
In general fund, back out of PBOT and to general fund discretionary sitting within our usable budgets.
That was so much better than when I said at 11 o'clock at night, yes. I am attempting to offset our general fund by using these dollars instead.
Is there a second?
Second.
Kealan Haley-Ruth, did you catch that? This is, okay, so we are looking at Dunphy 8, which was backing out 2.5 million of general fund from PBOT. What Counselor Dunphy just did is reduced that by 677,664. This is the Vision Zero programming that was previously funded with cannabis tax reductions. We're buying that back up with general fund within PBOT. The balance of the 2.5 million that is in Dunphy 8 is being backed out of PBOT and is available general fund discretionary dollars.
It's combining.
Got it, can I, Jeremy's going to come up, I think, I'm not sure how the confusion resulted, but there's only about $2 million of general, $2.3 million of general fund in PBOT, so there's a $200,000 discrepancy that would need to come from transportation, general transportation revenue?
Counselor Dunphy, are you intending to back out additional funds, or are you intending to back out all general fund dollars beyond the 677,664, whatever that balance happens to be?
That is my intention, is to, to back out the general funds in there minus the full funding for Vision Zero.
Can I try something here?
Please.
I believe that Counselor Dunphy is proposing a floor amendment which would redirect $677,664 of general fund within PBOT to the Vision Zero programming line and would back out the balance of the general fund within PBOT to general fund discretionary, leaving no general fund within PBOT except for that general fund which has been redirected to Vision Zero programming. And whatever that number, that balance is, is what you all tell us it is. It appears that it's somewhere around between 1.5 and 2 million.
Yes, about 1.6.
1.6, there we go. Is there a second for this amendment? Okay. Counselor Dunphy, or Counselor Canal, are you in the queue to discuss this?
Yes. I'm going to move to limit debate to one round per person on this item.
Counselor Smith, are you in the queue on this amendment?
Yes, Madam President. Could DCA Donapal come up to the dais? Good evening. Good morning, I guess. I'm trying to get something clear, so how much in outreach dollars did Vision Zero lose? I thought it was 274,000.
With the cannabis? For the record, this is PBOT and Public Works. For the fiscal year, having a reduction of 277,000 for the cannabis tax reduction, the $400,000 additional was a one-time funding that was taken away from the previous year, so that was a.
Okay, so we're going back a year?
Yes.
Two years, actually. But for this year, it was 277,000?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I needed to clear up, because I, I think what they do is, is very important, and Vision Zero at this time, I mean, people are crossing the street and they're being killed. We need to do something different, but we can't afford to take this 277 out. I'm not sure about all the other moving parts on this amendment, this floor amendment. I'm not, I'm not with that, but I'm with bringing the cannabis money back. And I just wanted to make sure that I was correct, because these numbers, they didn't, the numbers didn't number, I guess. Didn't work. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Novick?
I support restoring the Vision Zero money opposed backing out the general fund, but I also just wanted to raise a question. I realize that after having said that we need to make the TNC increase an emergency, I don't know if I specifically stated that, although I asked about it to begin with, because I wanted to ask the city attorney, do we need to take further action to make that ordinance an emergency?
When the council moves back into their regular council meeting and takes up Item 14, they will move to amend it to change the fee to $2. They will also move to amend to add an emergency clause.
Okay.
Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Like Counselor Novick, I support filling in from the cannabis tax reduction, but I'm having a hard time, it's late. Why are we doing what we're doing with the general fund, though? I mean, we need that general fund in PBOT, so why, why aren't we, why aren't we just doing the cannabis amount?
May I respond?
Please.
Go ahead, Counselor, thank you.
As I said when I was introducing it, it's for the purposes of discussion, there are certainly vital needs within the general, you know, to use general fund within PBOT, there are also vital needs in every corner, and also, we are all voting on 1,000 other things, and so I wanted it, for the purposes of this body making the right decision.
In support of Vision Zero, and our whole committee has made it a priority, but I don't want to take additional general fund away from PBOT. I'm, I'm fine with, you know, replacing the $677,000, but not the rest of the general fund.
Would you like to, could we split it into two? Is that possible?
I believe, I'm looking to Robert, but I believe one could move to divide the amendment. Is that appropriate, or would we?
If an amendment has multiple parts, any member may ask to divide the question. The maker of the motion can then decide which part of it is voted on first.
So, Counselor Dunphy, I'm asking you to divide this.
Absolutely, I'm happy to divide it, and I'd like to take the Vision Zero part first.
Okay. So, counselors, we are in debate on redirecting general fund within PBOT to Vision Zero programming in an amount of $677,664. Counselor Koyama Lane, you are next in the queue.
You all know how I feel about this, I feel very passionate. No one should die or be incapacitated from just going about their day, from moving through their neighborhood. We need to show Portlanders that we're serious about this. These are our streets, we have a responsibility to make them safe for everyone. We need to make Vision Zero whole, we need to make sure that we continue doing this work and we keep uplifting it. I know that our constituents matter to all of us, and this is very important. I urge you to support this and vote for it. I can say more, but I, it's late, I don't think I need to.
Counselors? I call the vote. I don't see anybody else in the queue. Can we take Counselor Ryan's quick question? Can you, okay.
Well, since PBOT folks are up here, what won't be done with the, if we direct this to Vision Zero? Like, how many sidewalks won't be built, et cetera? Yeah, it's Jeremy Pan with PBOT again. So, the funding right now, the general fund, the 2.3 million, 1 million is for derelict RV removal, so that funding will go away. If we, if we move all of the funding, the full 2.3, so we're either redirecting this 677 to Vision Zero and then returning the rest to the general fund, it's a million in derelict RV, it's about a half a million in paving gravel streets.
Can I pause you for one minute? We've divided this, so what we have before us for a vote right now is just the 677,664 going to Vision Zero.
So, we would have to decide out of these programs, which of those would.
Would lose that funding.
Would lose, yes. And then the remaining funding is street cleaning, Sunday park waste.
Point of information, though, I thought we just increased the fee, so I thought the point of this was we increased the fee to pay for these programs, so I don't see why it would be taking from other things when we're adding revenue.
There are some limitations to what those TNC fees can be used for. Are there items that are currently general fund funded that the TNC fees could offset?
The TNC fees are going into general transportation revenues. I know they sound a lot like general fund revenues, but they're, they're separate. The general transportation revenues can be spent on these particular programs as well. They could also be spent on Vision Zero work, if you wanted to keep the general fund for these programs.
Hi. Counselors, it looks like a number of other people just got in the queue, and I'm hoping that we are moving toward a vote on this. Counselor Ryan, are you in the queue on this? Counselor Green, are you in the queue on this? Counselor Green?
I just want to flag that I think I heard Counselor Novick say earlier that he was going to introduce an ordinance next week to relax the use restrictions on TNC fees.
Counselor Zimmerman?
I think we've worked really hard to combat the issue of people dumping their RVs in our community. I think the mayor was smart to increase the fee to tow them and destroy them and end the fact that most of them are just drug dens right now. I am not willing to give up those sacred general fund dollars for something that is about the livability and safety in this community, which is the number one thing that we've heard in the majority of, of our polls, so I, I hate that these two things are being pitted together, and I, and I'm frustrated by that, but hearing what it will be given up with the few bucks that are in general fund and transportation, I'm not sure I'm there.
I just want to clarify, did we also hear that general transportation revenues, which we've just increased, could be used for many of those programs that you listed?
That's correct.
Let me, let me.
Please clarify.
So, general transportation dollars, like maintenance stuff, is now going to be used to, for the RV destruction program that the mayor has funded?
We can use those, and we currently, we currently use those as well for part of the program costs.
And what was the reason, then, that general fund was used to, because I was under the impression that that's why general fund had to be put into that bureau?
Historically, the general fund is pitched in for derelict RVs just as to reduce the impact on transportation. So, transportation puts in funding for the program, and general fund is also putting in a million dollars of one time in this particular year for the program.
I, I appreciate that, thank you for helping me clarify. I think this falls in this category of, you know, getting rid of the program to tow RVs or whatever it is. I wish we could be more specific about what an impact would have if we're going to pull out this stuff in the, quite literally, the 11th hour. And, and so, it's hard to make, it's hard to make decisions like that when it's just a, everything kind of goes down. Everything kind of goes down is exactly what I've talked about from the very beginning, which is, let's do some stuff well, and let's stop doing some other stuff really poorly. And I think Millicent came up, because she probably has something very powerful to say.
Director Williams, would you like to give us some sense of what might happen if we were to take this? if we were to take this action? Then we will move on to the last two people in the queue, go to a vote, and get to finalizing our actions for this meeting.
Yes, and I'll try to do so very quickly. For the record, Millicent Williams, Director of the Portland Bureau of Transportation. I just wanted to share that the earlier conversation that we were having about the increase in TNC fees would generate roughly $5 million, of which the... Sorry, I'm trying to talk as quickly as I can as well. The proposed increase to $2 in the TNC fee would result in an additional $5 million in what would be considered general transportation revenue that would go to the bureau specifically and could be used for Vision Zero and other activities that are related specifically to the transportation bureau. If we were to address the issue in terms of reducing general fund, as the counselor has recommended, which is an option, of course, yes, it would have an immediate and direct impact on some of those very limited ways that we are using general fund within the bureau, and most of those things are for livability. We do not use a general fund within the bureau for things like planning. It is maintenance and operations, the very basic things that we do. So that would be the impact that we would feel. But of course, that is what we are instructed to do or directed to do. We will make the adjustments, but we would have to make cuts in other places.
Counselor Novick?
I just wanted to know, I mean, I'm excited about the Vision Zero money, but it seems to me maybe that the simplest thing to do is to not mess with the general fund amount. And now that we have an extra $5 million, come back on June 11th and figure out how to spend it on Vision Zero and probably a few other things, too. Does that make sense, Director Williams?
Yes, it does.
Thank you.
Other option, Counselor Kwayamalane.
I want to remind everyone that last year, 58 people were killed in traffic crashes in all of our districts. I don't love that right now Vision Zero is being pitted against livability. I did wait to bring this amendment forward until we voted to increase the TNC fees, which we did. It's going to result in 5 million extra. We know that. I think this is an important amendment to show our constituents that we care about making our streets safe.
Counselors, I see that people keep getting in the queue, and I just want to remind us that I need to move us very quickly into wrapping up this meeting because we have a number of votes we have to take still. Counselor Smith, did you have? You did limit debate. You're right. We've heard from Counselor Smith, I believe. And I believe we've heard from Counselor Mario on this.
We're just going to vote. That's what I was coming for.
Counselors, I believe we are going to move to a vote. Kealan, could you please call the roll?
Canal?
Just clarifying, we're voting on the Vision Zero part of the amended Dunphy eight.
Just the Vision Zero portion.
Thank you. For the sake of moving this along, I won't do a long speech, but thank you so much to Counselor Kwayamalane for your leadership on this, and I vote aye.
Ryan?
Yeah. For pedestrian safety, I actually think this could be a big mistake because I'm hearing that we'll have to pull money from the general fund to do some of the maintenance work that's necessary. And so I'm going to vote no.
Kwayamalane?
Aye.
Mario?
We increased TNC fees so that we could do transformative things like this, and being able to walk safely in your neighborhood is a livability issue. Aye.
Novick?
I am totally prepared to vote on June 11th to allocate $677,000 of the 5 million that we're raising to Vision Zero. I'm just tired, confused. I don't want to back out any of the general fund, and I think it's just easier to leave the general fund there and take this up in a couple of weeks.
We need a vote.
No.
This is a very, very high priority for the Transportation Infrastructure Committee. We voted on it. We had a celebration, a lot of testimony, so I'm voting yes.
Green?
Ditto, yes.
Zimmerman?
No.
Avalos?
Aye.
Dunphy?
Aye.
Smith?
No.
Bertogini?
Aye.
Amendment is approved with eight yes votes and four no votes.
Counselor Dunphy, in order to get through things we need to do to close out this meeting, I'm asking if you would withdraw your motion, knowing that we can come, the other half of your motion, knowing that we can come back to it on the 11th?
Yeah, withdrawn.
Do we not have till midnight? I'm confused.
We have until midnight, but we need to move back into the fee bill, take that vote, move back into the budget bill, take that vote, move into Prosper, take that vote. And I am, and we literally have to be closing our meeting before the clock strikes midnight. So I'm going to move us to the fee bill now. Counselors, I'm going to recess our meeting, our Budget Committee meeting, and open back up a council meeting. Counselors, I believe we have Item 14 left open in our council agenda from this morning. This is the revised transportation and fee schedule. We have debated this bill. I believe we need an amendment to this bill. Would anybody like to make an amendment to the fee schedule in Agenda Item 14? I'm sorry, Kealan, do you need to call the roll as we switch meetings, or are we okay? We're all here.
You are, you're fine. You can call the roll if you want to verify a quorum, but a quorum is present.
Quorum is present. Great, thank you. So counselors, I would entertain an amendment to Agenda Item 14, which we left open to the fee schedule, which is in Exhibit... I am trying to grab which one. F, I'm being told from my right. Thank you. The fee schedule in Exhibit F, where it says TNC fee per ride 65 cents, and in the fiscal year 2526 column, to increase that to $2. Would anybody care to make that motion?
So moved.
I heard a "so moved" from Counselor Canal. Counselor Novick, would you like to second?
Second.
Okay, counselors, is there any debate on this motion? Counselor Canal, is that why you are in the queue? Counselor Green, is that why you are in the queue? Seeing no debate, Kealan, could you please call the roll?
Canal?
Aye.
Ryan?
No.
Kwayamalane?
This is to amend the fee schedule.
Yes. Mario?
I'm sorry, I'm delirious. Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Zimmerman?
No.
Avalos?
Aye.
Dunphy?
Yes.
No.
Bertogini?
Aye. Counselor...
Sorry. The amendment is approved with nine yes votes.
Thank you. Counselors, I would entertain a motion to attach an emergency clause to Agenda Item 14. Somebody might tell me where we put this emergency clause on here. I believe it would be in the ordinance language.
The emergency clause would be added as section two to the ordinance. The emergency, we should spell out the reason for the emergency.
I believe the emergency is in order to pass this in time to have a balanced budget. You tell me legally what emergency we call that.
We're good.
Counselor Zimmerman, do we have a second?
Second.
Robert, are you okay with the legality of that emergency clause?
Yes, I believe the need to pass the budget on a timeline so that we can send this to the TSCC as an emergency, yes.
Thank you. And I believe that was moved by Zimmerman and seconded by Novick. Any discussion? Seeing none, Kealan, could you please call the roll?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Kwayamalane?
Aye.
Mario?
Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Zimmerman?
No.
Avalos?
Aye.
Dunphy?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Bertogini?
Aye.
Amendment is approved with 11 yes votes and 1 no vote.
Counselors, we are back to the underlying ordinance. Is there any discussion on the underlying ordinance? Seeing no discussion in the queue, I will note that this is the amended Agenda Item 14 with the new fee schedule and an emergency clause attached to it. Kealan, could you please call the roll?
Canal?
It constitutes an emergency ordinance. I vote aye. No.
Kwayamalane?
Yes.
Mario?
Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Zimmerman?
No.
Avalos?
Aye.
Dunphy?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Bertogini?
Aye.
Emergency ordinance is passed as amended with 10 yes votes and 2 no votes.
Thank you. Kealan, I believe that was the last Agenda item open in our meeting. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, counselors, I am going to close today.
Whoa, no. The whole meeting?
No, the council meeting. Closing the council meeting.
I'm just checking. I'm just checking. I'm awake.
Everyone had a panic attack there. We are only closing the council meeting. We are going to reopen the Budget Committee meeting. How's that? Do we feel a little better now? We're reopening the Budget Committee meeting? Counselors, I told my staff we could do all of this closeout work in a half an hour, and they told me they thought we'd need an hour at least. And I think I am going to be right on this one if you all keep going at this speed. And if I can find my paperwork. So Ruth, could you please update us on where we stand as it relates to balance?
Yes. Sorry. I believe you are still to the good on general fund discretionary So I think you need to put that into contingency.
I'm sorry, 309,000?
914.
And then on...
On overhead?
We need to do anything with that overhead to go into balance.
Sorry. Hold on, I'm getting a message.
The reason I'm asking this is that we need to send a balanced budget. So what we can do, because we're only partway through our work today, is add money that is in the positive out of balance to contingency, knowing that we intend to pull that back out of contingency for our work when we come back on the 11th, should we need it. But that will allow us to send a balanced budget to the TSCC. In order to do that, we need to know what our current balance is.
Madam President, I would move to move all remaining positive balance dollars into contingency.
I'm sorry, Counselor Canal, I did not realize you were in the queue for this moment.
Yes. I would like to make sure that we are still going to parks before that, so I will make the motion that Counselor Mario made earlier to reorder to get into the parks section of this.
Second? Other than the votes on Prosper and on the budget, what other closeout items do we need to do tonight that we need to make sure we have time for?
You have to vote to approve tax levies.
Okay. So we need about 20 minutes, probably, for all of that closeout work?
Yeah.
Counselors, that gives us, because I would like some buffer just in case, about 15 minutes of flex time right now. We are not going to get through all of the parks amendments. I would suggest that we close here so that we can get through things on time. And I will give you all my word that my intention is, as long as I'm not overridden by your colleagues, to start with parks when we pick this back up on the 11th.
No.
No.
No, I think we can hustle through this, and we can get to the only parks amendment that the entire community is waiting for.
I don't think there's just one that the entire community is waiting for. I think there are a lot.
That's an uncrease, which is more exciting.
Counselors, I believe that we need to keep moving here. So... Ruth? What is our, what is our out of balance right now?
Yeah. I think you need to put $999,340 into contingency.
999,000?
340.
So moved. I made a motion. Point of order. There is a motion already on the floor to reorder the agenda and go into parks.
I was actually asking for a motion when you said you were in the queue, and Counselor Zimmerman had said "so moved", and that is something we regularly do outside of the queue.
Second.
We have a second to move $999,340 into contingency. We can then allocate those back in the adopted budget actions on the 11th so that we can send a balanced budget to TSCC. Is there any discussion on the motion? The motion, Kealan, was made by Zimmerman and seconded by Counselor Novick. Is there anyone in the queue for discussion? Counselor Canal, are you in the queue for discussion? Counselor Zimmerman, you took yourself out of the queue. Okay. Kealan, could you please call the roll?
Canal?
No.
Ryan?
Aye.
Kwayamalane?
Aye.
Mario?
Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Green? Zimmerman?
Aye.
Avalos?
Aye.
Dunphy?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Bertogini?
Aye.
Amendment is approved with 11 yes votes and 1 no vote.
Thank you. So we have... Switching here. Director Levine, I am not finding the script for the next portion that we need to do here.
Yeah.
I apologize.
You need to vote on the tax levies. So... Sorry. I have the script, sorry. I think you need to vote to update the change memo, which is Attachment B and C
Great.
to reflect the amendments that have been approved tonight.
So counselors, I would entertain a motion to update Amendments B and C to reflect the amendments that were adopted this evening.
So moved.
Moved by Canal, seconded by Green. Is there any discussion? Okay. Seeing none, Canal, is that what you... Okay. Kealan, can you please call the roll?
Canal?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Malane?
Aye.
Mario?
Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Clark? Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Zimmerman?
Aye.
Avalos?
Aye.
Dunphy?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Bertogini? Smith.
Aye.
Bertogini.
Aye.
It's motion carries with 12 yes votes.
Okay, councillors, we need to vote to approve the amended budget. So I would entertain a motion to approve the budget as amended. I will note that we know that we have much more work to do on this, but it is in a state where it is balanced, and we can send it to TSCC.
So moved.
Thank you.
I'd like to speak to it.
We need to approve the amended budget. There's an asterisk here, because we know that we are going to further amend it later, but in order to send it to TSCC.
Second.
So you're trying to close this out? You're trying to close it out?
This closes it for tonight.
We are at 11:23. We have the right to be here till midnight. We have one balanced amendment, 2 million from police to 2 million to parks, maintenance, which still has not been filled, by the way. So we don't have to close this meeting right now at all.
Councillors, do we have a motion?
I made the motion, and I'd like to speak to it.
Councillor, so we have a motion from Canal and a second from Zimmerman. Councillor Canal, please speak to your motion.
I withdraw the motion and yield to councillor Avalos.
I still motion it, then.
I already had the floor, and I yielded it.
He had the floor and yielded. Councillor Zimmerman, councillor Avalos.
I would like to make a motion to move Avalos 1.
Seven.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to move Avalos 1. Councillor, speak to your amendment.
All right, thank you. I know we are at the end here, but this feels like an important vote. This is the uncrease to the police. Uncrease is credit to councillor Canal, that terminology. Number one, this is not about reducing police effectiveness. It is about a balanced approach to public safety that includes well-maintained parks where families feel safe gathering. A park with working facilities, proper lighting, and regular maintenance is a safe park, and that makes a safe community. This funding preserves the safety infrastructure that our neighborhoods depend on, especially District 1, which is being disproportionately hurt by the maintenance cuts. I was really disheartened to see that two parks that we haven't even cut the ribbon to open are getting cut all their maintenance before they even open. When a park bathroom is closed due to plumbing issues or playground, residents lose access to the public spaces they deserve. Right now, Portland Police has 90 vacant positions while successfully reducing crime rates, and this amendment redirects the one-time funds that they were increased by above their base budget that would likely remain unspent due to ongoing recruitment challenges. I'm going to leave it at that. I think it's pretty self-explanatory. Um, yeah. And I guess, do I need a second?
You do need a second, councillor.
I have a second. Oh, I guess, hold on, one more thing. The last thing I'll say is, I would like to thank councillor Mario. We are teaming up on this, so Avalos 1 and Mario 1 are one. And I also want to give a shout-out to councillor Novick, who also had been proposing similar ideas to this, to be able to fund our maintenance needs. So, and now I'm done. Thank you.
So I'm going to ask everybody to limit themselves to one time in the queue. We need to move quickly. This has been proposed and seconded. Councillor Novick, are you in the queue on this amendment?
Yes. First of all, a question for the Budget Director. I had a confusing conversation about the police $2 million that's a swap with something, and the $2 million that's a pure one-time increase, and I just want to make sure that this is the 2 million that's the pure one-time increase.
Yes.
Yeah, there is a one-time increase of 2 million.
Okay. And I just wanted to say that I personally would rather we be increasing the police budget. I think that we could use a dedicated burglary unit, but I can't accept having all, most of the cuts fall on parks' maintenance, and increasing the police budget when we were slashing parks' maintenance did not sit well with me. I also want to say, however, note an interesting conversation I had with the Portland Chamber yesterday, where they said, interestingly, that they'd been misquoted, they're not unalterably opposed to an increased parks levy, but they sort of suggested that their support for a levy might be conditioned on the discussions about the police budget. So I told them, that's very interesting, let's have some discussions over the next couple of weeks.
Councillors, I am in the queue. I agree with much of what councillor Novick said. I don't want to be pitting these things against each other. Unfortunately, a cut's budget makes tough decisions. There are a lot of proposals that have been brought forward for funding parks' maintenance. I would like to find a way to fund parks' maintenance. I am not interested in cutting police budgets to fund parks' maintenance until we have looked at other options, to see whether those other options have legs, have support or not. Therefore, I will be a no on this amendment tonight. Councillor Mario, you're in the queue.
So what I'm hearing from councillor Novick is that apparently the Portland Metro Chamber gets to run this town and tell everybody, under vague threat, what we can or cannot do with our budget. This is not a cut to police. There will not be a single officer laid off. This was a $2 million increase to the police budget, which no other bureau received at this time. They have 91 fully funded vacant positions. You have been one of the leaders on this discussion. I would hope that one measly call with a Metro Chamber wouldn't shiver your timbers so much that you couldn't vote with us. I really hope that we can just get this done. Come on, Novick! Come on, come on!
Councillor Ryan?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Earlier today, we heard from Chief Bob Day on this, on the topic of cuts to police. And I would like to see, Mike Myers, are you still on the, in the queue?
Yes.
DC Myers, can you please tell us what impact this will have on police operations and services?
So, council, the chief may or may not be in the audience, but I would like to redirect to him, but ultimately, you know, I'm not in favor of reducing funding from one Public Safety Bureau to fund another. The mayor's proposed budget does an excellent job in balancing the need to maintain core services, but the need to create sustainability around new initiatives that are showing results like ceasefire. So I think we have an opportunity to talk about this. I do think there will be an impact. I'd like to turn it over to the Budget Team, if they have any other comments about the impacts on the reduction for the police budget. If there's someone there present that can talk about that from the police bureau?
Elizabeth coming.
Nope, nope, I was just going to say Chief Day is going to come on, so I will let him take it away.
Chief, thank you for joining us. Are you, do you, were you here for the question?
Yes, I was. Can you hear me all right?
We can.
Go ahead, chief.
All right.
Chief, you're cutting in and out now.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I apologize, I left a little bit early. And been having the conversation, I had to leave a little bit early, all times over the last several weeks. Clearly, some of the councillors do not either respect or trust the responsibility given to me in my role as Chief of Police. This is significant effort that we've been making over the last 20 months. I think demonstrates a high level of accountability and respect for the wish of Portlanders across the board, as we partner with numerous folks inside and outside of law enforcement and across the community to help restore public safety, as it is individual and unique to each person in each district. I understand that.
Chief, chief, we are very short on time, and I believe the question before us is what the impact on the ground would be of a reduction like this on the force, and I'm hoping that you can answer that question for us.
It is the, it is the answer that I have been sharing, that there will be a reduction in services. How those services will show up, I don't know yet, because I don't know how much money and what the impact's going to be at the end of the budget cycle. But I can tell you that it will be a reduction of services. The mayor upped this $2 million to help us support with recruitment and hiring, and so that'll be impacted, and also the ongoing support for some of the specific crime reduction plan that we're doing. So that, those will be decreased. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Day.
Councillor Ryan, did you have additional comments?
Well, I'm just, I want to hear from my District 1 councillors also. How will you explain this to your constituents?
Councillor, the District 1 can get in the queue to respond to this.
Right. I'm curious how they're going to explain this to their constituents, who overwhelmingly, like all of my constituents I talked to in storefronts, who will be very, very disappointed if we take this action at this time.
Councillor Zimmerman?
Thanks. I've never seen a city council or a county commission in my life be so giddy to cut public safety. This is, this is not a laughing matter. It's 11:30 at night, and I know that folks want to have fun, but this is serious stuff. This is a city who was rocked five years ago. This is a city who has difficulty retaining officers. This is a city who has built back over the last five years. This is a city who has renewed its investment in the Portland Police, because we know after their response job, the next most important job that I've asked the chief to do is increase retention and increase recruitment to fill these vacancies. Right now is not the reason, is not the time to cut public safety, is not the time to cut police officers. Yes, there are vacancies, but there are multiple other offers out here to backfill the parks. We are choosing to keep $100 million in contingency in the PSF Fund, when PSF is already funding so much of parks. They can take on a little bit more, so that they can fill that vacancy, or excuse me, that backlog of maintenance. We are pitting parks against police, and they're the two things that Portlanders want right now. They don't have to be pitted together. This is a move. This council is giddy to cut it. Councillor Ryan is correct.
Councillor, please don't impugn your colleagues' motives.
I didn't impugn any motives, and what I'm saying is that this council has been giddy to cut police all day long to get to this vote at the 11:35 point. This is not necessary. We can backfill parks with many other amendments that have been proposed. I hope you will consider those instead.
Councillor Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is not amusing to me. There's been a lot of hyperbole that I don't appreciate. I think we are absolutely, if you vote for this, we are absolutely sending the wrong signal to the public and to the rest of the country that watches us. We are turning the corner right now, and this is going backwards. I want to restore the transit police. I want to restore traffic enforcement. I want to restore, build a burglary unit, and this is what people want. So I don't find it amusing. It's very difficult for me. I don't want to send the wrong signal, and I want people to feel safe. I'll leave it at that.
Councillor Koyamalane?
I want people to feel safe, too. That resonates. I would like Director Long to come up and paint the picture for us of what the cuts look like, as briefly as possible, for our constituents.
Director Long, please do this in two minutes or less. We are stretching thin the time that our staff can be here to support us. I'm sorry.
Thank you, council, for the record. Adina Long, Director of Portland Parks and Recreation. Proposed budget cuts to PP&amp;R for fiscal year '25-'26 will significantly reduce the staff needed to maintain parks, natural areas, trails, community gardens, and community center and other recreational facilities. Without adequate personnel, we face declines in basic services like litter removal, restroom cleaning, play equipment, lighting, fencing, amenity repairs, fire risk mowing, and ADA barrier removal. This will directly impact public safety, cleanliness, accessibility, and our ability to manage the maintenance workload. Cutting staff now means higher costs later, as deferred maintenance leads to broken equipment, asset failure, deteriorating trails, unsafe structures, and emergency repairs. These reductions will also slow our response to storm damage, vandalism, and safety hazards, while deepening inequities in park access across all of our communities. Protecting maintenance personnel is a direct investment in public health, safety, and the long-term stewardship of our parks. I could go on about external materials and services, which is a part of the maintenance reductions. This would cause our maintenance teams to be severely limited, and our land service and professional repair and maintenance services, and those are tradespeople, the ability to perform essential upkeep for, across our parks, facilities, and natural areas. This funding supports critical tasks like restroom cleaning, graffiti removal, roof repairs, and the maintenance of dog parks, playgrounds, trails, lighting, and more. Without it, even basic repairs and upkeep will stall, leading to faster deterioration of public assets, increased safety risks, and higher long-term costs. These reductions will directly impact park quality, community use, and our ability to protect public investments. Sustaining this funding is vital for Portland's parks to remain clean, safe, and functional for all. Happy to take any other questions.
Thank you, Director. Councillor Canal, I don't believe you've spoken yet.
I have not yet, Madam President. I have a quick question, just on the subject of where this money would go, and I think my understanding is, for councillor Novick, my understanding is that your support is contingent on this going to, to parks' maintenance. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Thank you. So what I'm, I'm just going to speak to the parks' maintenance side. As I've been seeing here, we've, we've talked about picnic tables and benches that have rotted, we've talked about graffiti, we've talked about grass and weeds, we talked about a fire hazard, which is a very obvious public safety need in the community. We've talked about reducing restroom cleanings and turf maintenance and facility repairs, repairs, and also taking out the trash. These are the things that, that really affect people who go to parks. I'll note that in all the information that I've received, both anecdotally and in terms of surveys, not only the entire city, but District 2 in particular, cares a great deal about their parks. We have separate issues to deal with at parks, with the recreation funding, that's really important, with the park ranger funding, which is really important, too. I've often said that a, when most people are describing the, the ideal response to a low-acuity public safety issue, they're, they're talking about park rangers, but they're also talking about the conditions that allow people to thrive. And, you know, we, I had a meeting with the, with the Parks Alliance, and they asked what the mission of Portland Parks were, and I said, the best way I can explain it is, it's the gap between surviving in this city and thriving in this city, is where the Parks Bureau fits in. It's the thing that makes life a little bit better, and, and more than just the baseline. So, you know, working on that has really, really been influential, as I've dug into that, preparing for this budget. The other thing that I'd like to point out, I, I didn't study math, and there's some PhDs up here, but 316 and 316 appear to me to be the same number, and not higher or lower than each other. And so characterizing something that went from 316 to 318, and then would go back to 316, as a cut, is disingenuous, okay? Incredibly disingenuous. And we deserve, as Portlanders, everybody out here deserves, that we don't mislead them about what the numbers here are. Thank you.
Councillor Smith, I don't believe you've spoken to this yet.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, Maya Angelou said, "When people show you who they are, believe them." I've been fighting for SIP ever since I got here, so we can have safe streets, safe sidewalks. And I didn't once think about taking away money from the police to pay for my sidewalks, because people in District 1, they believe that police don't come quick enough. They believe that we should have twice the number of police that we have. And so having this conversation around parks, police, sidewalk safety, you know, vision, zero, all those kinds of things, we can have that conversation. But we can't start to defund the police in little ways and, and keep picking off of it, keep picking off of it. Everybody knows it takes 18 to 20 months to hire someone. And it is my understanding that we have about 2,000 applicants in the queue right now for police officers. If we start picking off of the budgets, we're going to have a real problem, and I'm not ready to do that right now. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, councillor. Councillors, everybody else in the queue, I believe, has already spoken to this measure. Councillor Avalos, you introduced this. I had asked that we speak once to this, so that we can be done by midnight. Out of... speak once to this so that we can be done by midnight, out of respect for our staff. So I'm going to ask that we move to a vote at this time. Canal?
Thank you. Um, yeah.
Can we please just vote? We've all had a chance to speak. Y'all, we need to be done in 16 minutes, and we have a budget to vote on.
I'll do one sentence. If this was a cut, then this would be a different conversation. But again, going up and then saying, no, let's not go up, is not a cut. I vote aye.
Ryan?
I was elected in September 2020. It was a really difficult vote. And the political realities were, you know, you better go ahead and cut the police, defund the police. That was the slogan. I felt like I got it right, even though I took a lot of heat for it. And we stopped the bleeding. We stopped the cuts. We've been slowly building back over the last four years. You've seen the culture respond. You're seeing more and more people on the streets saying, thank you. We're starting to finally get responses. When I went around to every small business storefront that you approved earlier, the grants, they all said, do not cut the police. This council will make a big, big mistake that you will regret if we go ahead and put this through. Residents and businesses will continue to leave. The tax base will continue to erode. There'll be a decrease in public services because this is connected to our economic development. That's where we get our revenue.
Councilor?
The decline in public satisfaction. So I really hope that this council blocks this short-sighted amendment, and we get to fund parks maintenance through the levy that we're gonna talk about later. And I deserved every second of what I just used my time for. No.
Koyamalane?
This is not a cut. I vote aye.
Murillo?
Police have had 91 fully funded vacant positions for the past five years. So even if it takes a few months to hire, they should have already done that by now. They are unable to hire for other reasons. I also want to point out that Murillo Amendment Seven talks about the Police Special Revenue Fund, which currently holds around $6 million in asset forfeiture fees that the police can use to fill some of their budget. We have confirmed that with city attorneys. So when they say that there is no money, there is money for them. And this increase does not have to go to police. It could go to parks. And people are asking for these park services. So with that, I vote aye.
Novick?
If the mayor had proposed cutting the police budget by $6 billion and adding $2 million in general fund to the parks budget, I'd be voting to restore some police funding. Tonight, I vote aye.
Clark?
This is absolutely a false choice. I vote no.
Green?
Aye.
Zimmerman?
We chose to cut parks maintenance at the expense, or excuse me, to keep tree code regulators who we've heard about. That same recommendation came from the same director who proposed in her preliminary budget to cut sports. Mayor, you got played. They knew that this was gonna happen. You got played. I vote no.
In general, I would really appreciate not being district-splained. I know my district. I knock on those doors. They want to be safe. I want them to be safe. My entire agenda is about safety. I just don't believe that a police budget that has over $300 million, when we're in a dire budget, needs to have an increase. So I vote to uncrease by $2 million. I vote aye.
Dunphy?
I've asked repeatedly what these funds are designated to be used for. I have heard broadly around call time, but I've not been able to understand what that means because everybody agrees that the academy is full, it takes 18 months to get an officer hired, and we have a 91 vacancy, or 80-plus vacancies. And I don't, no one has been able to explain to me how these $2 million will actually be used this year. I vote aye.
Smith?
No.
Hertle Guinea?
I was prepared to reconsider this after considering other options. No.
The amendment is approved with seven yes votes and five no votes.
Counselors, we need to approve this budget. So here to approve this budget. And then we need to approve the Prosper budget. So I would entertain an amendment to approve the budget, to be able to send it to TSCC.
With the addition of that amendment...
We need to reconsider...
No, I would, I believe it would be in order for a motion to approve the adjustments and attachments, B, C, and D of the, of the memo. That would just...
Again. We need to repeat that work because we were interrupted last time. Fantastic. Counselors, we now have 11 minutes. I hope that no one speaks as they explain their votes. I would point out that that is against Roberts' rules, though I generally do not enforce that. I would entertain a motion to amend the attachments, the exhibits necessary to reflect the changes in our budget.
So moved.
Second.
I see no discussion. Kealan, can you please call the roll?
Aye.
Ryan?
So this is on the entire package, based on all the amendments that were passed tonight?
We are not yet voting on the budget. We are voting to update the attachments to reflect the new changes to the budget.
So this is a technical vote?
This is a technical vote.
After what we just experienced, I had to have that explained to me.
Understood. That's okay.
Aye.
Koyamalane?
Aye.
Murillo?
Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Zimmerman?
No.
Avalos?
Aye.
Dunphy?
Aye.
Smith?
No.
Hertle Guinea?
Aye.
I'm changing my vote. No.
Kealan, I voted aye. What are we at?
The amendment, or, no, the motion carries with nine yes votes and three no votes.
Thank you, Counselors. I would now entertain a motion to pass our budget.
So moved.
Moved by Avalos, seconded by Councilor Novick. Seeing no discussion in the queue, Kealan, can you please call the roll?
Canal?
This is on the, the whole thing?
This is on the budget as it currently stands to send to TSCC, knowing that we will reopen it on the 11th.
I will have more to say when we get to the, the full thing then, and I will, for the interest of time, vote aye.
Thank you.
Ryan?
Yeah, based on the cuts to police, I vote no.
Koyamalane?
Aye.
Murillo?
Negotiating with your fellow councilors is part of the job. Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Clark?
No.
Green?
Aye.
Zimmerman?
No.
Avalos?
Aye.
Dunphy?
Aye.
Smith?
No.
Hertle Guinea?
Aye.
Motion carries with eight yes votes and four no votes.
Thank you. Do we have anything else we need to do in this meeting before I close it and move us back into our Prosper Portland budget meeting?
You have to read the paragraph about the tax levies and vote on that.
We voted on the tax levies. Do we need to do it again?
I do not believe you've done that yet.
Okay. So, colleagues, the city shall levy its full permanent rate of $4.57 per thousand dollars of assessed value and $32,589,672 for the payment of voter-approved general obligations on principal and interest. Is this the right paragraph, Ruth? You look like this is the wrong paragraph.
It's the right paragraph, the wrong number. I don't know why. $33,570,654 of voter-approved...
I have different numbers, so I'm gonna let you read the numbers.
Keep going.
And 243... For the obligations for Fire and Police Disability and Retirement Fund. 80 cents per thousand of assessed value for the Parks Local Option Levy. We're doing okay there? 40 and, 40.26 cents per thousand of assessed value for the Children's Levy. We're doing okay. Furthermore, the city shall levy the amounts listed in Attachment E for Urban Renewal Collections. I would entertain a motion to approve the tax levies.
So moved.
Point of order.
Counselor?
I thought we had $100 million variance.
This is just to approve tax levies. You have to vote to approve tax levies in order to levy taxes.
Okay. Moved by Councilor Canal. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Dunphy. Seeing no discussion in the queue, Kealan, can you please call the roll? We are voting to levy taxes, Counselors.
Canal?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Koyamalane?
Aye.
Murillo?
Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Zimmerman?
Aye.
Avalos?
Aye.
Dunphy?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Hertle Guinea?
Aye.
Motion carries with 12 yes votes.
Okay. Director Levine, my script says that you discuss next steps, but we are at 11:54, so I'm gonna propose we skip that for now. Thank you. Is there any reason I cannot close our Budget Committee hearing?
Go ahead.
Okay, I have the go-ahead from our Budget Director and our attorneys. Counselors, I'm going to close our meeting as the Budget Committee of the Portland City Council. We await moving back into the still-open meeting of the Prosper Budget Committee. Counselors, we have an amended Prosper budget. I am not sure that we need to make any other special changes here. I believe we have adopted the amendments that we need to. So I would entertain a motion to approve the Prosper budget and send it to TSCC as well. Moved by Councilor Murillo, seconded by Councilor Canal. Seeing no discussion in the queue, Kealan, can you please call the roll?
Thank you. Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Koyamalane?
Aye.
Murillo?
Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Clark?
No.
No.
Zimmerman?
Aye.
Avalos?
Aye.
Dunphy?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Hertle Guinea?
Aye.
Motion carries with 10 yes votes and 2 no votes.
Counselors, I will close. Yes? Anything else we need to do for Prosper? Seeing nothing else from our Budget Director, seeing nothing else from our attorney, I am looking to chabri anything else you need from us for your budget. I will close the budget here, the, the meeting of the Budget Committee for Prosper Portland. Counselors, we have closed out all of our meetings. We have done our work for tonight. We will follow up with next steps on the budget sometime later this week. Thank you all for your diligence, time, patience, and work together throughout the day.